This property is covered, as you can see from the photos.
I was keeping that.
And you can see that there's very few windows that are still there, the roof line.
Yeah, from the front porch, you can't even see this building.
No. You can call it the old Ice House.
I've been there.
And there is no 911 address. So, it's been there, obviously, a very long time and the only thing I've ever heard people refer to an ass is the old Ice House. But you can see the roof. I don't know what this is. Yeah, there's... This is very... If you drive up there and you pull up, you can see where the roof has completely collapsed and you can kind of see it in this lower picture here. The shadow right here between the leaves, that's where the nonexistent roof sits. It's kind of a... It looks like a shadow, but that's actually where metal should be.
Hasn't been any communication?
We have. We contacted on and off, actually, for the last three or four years. We tried to contact the owner. In this particular property, it's one of those where EFCO Incorporated apparently still exists, but it went defunct. And tax records is in care of a gentleman who's deceased and it still goes to the widow. The original intention letter we sent, she... Her attorney contacted us and said, well, originally, three or four years ago, her family contacted us and said, "We had nothing to do with this." I'm like, "Well, your name is still on here." And they explained it to me, that the title was never... It was a long story. And I don't get everything, because it didn't make sense to me. So, anyway, fast forward, we tried it again. And their attorney had contacted us and I handed it off to Andy, because again, it's very confusing what they're saying as far as the... It's all a lot of the corporate laws and that type of thing, which I am not... I just don't have a lot of knowledge on. There still is notice of assessment that's in EFCO's name. Somebody's paying taxes, because they haven't gone up for tax sale or purchase sale yet. But I know when we sent this notice out for the public hearing, we sent it to the widow, which is the address on the tax statement. We sent it to the corporate representative from the State House. And we sent it to... There's another name with EFCO that was on the records from somewhere Andy found. And we sent it to all three. And we received one of them back, unclaimed, and the other two, I had not heard anything from.
Who's paying the taxes?
I have no idea.
We're getting a check. Somebody.
I don't know.
Even if they're paying the line?
Right. Yeah, and the online... I don't know if they're paying online. I'm not sure who it is. Normally, if somebody writes a check, the treasurer can tell me who wrote it. And I hadn't checked before I came in here to see these past springs, but I know when I checked before, it was... I don't know. So, either somebody walked in and paid cash, or it was paid with a lump. You know, multiple properties were paid with one check. I'm not sure.
You know who the widow is?
Oh, yeah.
Either way, even... I mean, I could go in and pay your taxes if I wanted to. I don't know why I would, but I could.
Two hours, two days.
Anybody who pays my taxes if they want to, feel free. But, so basically, that's where we're at with this property. Obviously, it's in very, very bad shape. Nobody's claiming it.
So, what are our options?
Your options are to affirm the condemnation, which would mean that Andy would move forward with taking it, having it in a judge's signature, and then the city would pay for the tear down and cleanup. And a lien would be placed on the property, so that if it was ever sold, transferred, then it would have to be paid back to the city. You could deny the condemnation, say, "No, it's not that bad."
Yeah, it's... What's in the building?
Brad. Brad.
That thing was in bad shape in 2000. It had electrical equipment in there and it was...
Got ripped off.
Probably. I mean, you could just walk in the back half and the wall that had fallen down, there was no roof over it in 2000. So, unless they've... It doesn't look like they put any money into it. It's 15 years decline. I'm surprised that Matthew's stuff hasn't cooked it yet.
You know what we're talking about, Sean?
No, I don't.
You know where Wilson bought the old armored dairy on Fourth Street? Behind it?
Yeah.
Where they put the scales? Right next to it. Right next to it. You can't see it because of all the vegetation.
It's right at the end of that dead end road, Indiana.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Indiana Avenue. It's right at the end on the left... Well, it'd be on the west side. Kind of got to look close, though. There's so many trees that really looks like a log. You're going to pull in the driveway and kind of look to the right.
Just southeast of the scales that you put in.
Yeah.
Where that dead end's back here, Indiana. Yeah, look for it.
I'm sure there's remnants of something in there.
Like I said, I know the... I'm drawing a blank on the company who bought the dairy.
Prairie Mill?
Yeah, Prairie Mills. There was about six employees that came out when my guys went out to take pictures, because they had to go around onto the Prairie Mills. They just drove around, passed the scales. And they'd had so much trouble with vandalism on their side that I had... Dave recently had knee surgery, so I told him he couldn't walk around it, that, "Go get Gary and make him do it." So Gary was walking around this way, and as Gary walked around, the guys met him on the other side. And so, yes, there's obviously been issues.
Yeah.
It's not going to get any better. I'd say push it to Andy.
You ready for a motion?
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion and send it on to Andy Perkins, our city attorney. Still moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Is that Chase second or Paul Farner?
Chase got one.
Seven oh? Okay, I will send it on to Andy. Do you want to do the update?
While you're here, why don't you just... We'll move down. If nobody objects to the unfinished business on 1,000 and Rose Streets, since Casey's here.
Do we have to close the public hearing?
Oh, yeah, we will close the public hearing at this point. Unless there's anybody else who wants to speak on it. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Thank you very much. Okay, now we're going to move down to 1,000 and Rose Streets. Since Jeff Esker's here and Casey's on this.
I did bring photos. Mr. Temper did visit me in the office today. And as a remark to that, his intention, he realizes now that he does not wish to upgrade the house. What he'd like to do is either sell it or give it away. To sell it to an interested party who wants to rehab it, to utilize it for possibly rentals or even possibly habitat. What he would like to do, he has contacted... I gave him the name and number for habitat individual, who I thought could... They talked to him. And he's spoken to another individual. He's meeting there tomorrow for a possible sale for them to rehab it, utilize it for rentals. So, what he would like to ask for you guys tonight is to give him another 30 days to try to find either someone to take it or to buy it for a small sum, if that's possible. You can see that since we spoke last, the pole... The roof has collapsed. There's a hole in the roof now. And there is the front porch, the one corner where the pole... You can kind of see the front porch leaning a little bit and the foundation has cracked a little bit. Needs some masonery work. And the hole... The roof line has a hole on the side of it as well. There's definitely a lot of maintenance needed. Not to mention whatever's behind the bushes. I'm not sure what's back there.
If Andy's on vacation right now, right?
Perkins? Yes.
Yeah, he's coming back when?
Uh, I believe he'll be back in the office Tuesday.
Tuesday?
So, we want to just continue with your... We want a 30-day suspension.
If you could just continue it to the next meeting, I think I might have a lot more answers for you, plus Andy would be here to maybe help. The options that you would have would be to continue it or to affirm the condemnation again with, you know, basically, the city taking over and tearing it down. And then lien would go on the property or denying the condemnation.
Well, that's going to take some time, though, too. I mean, that's time that I have overnight, so... I'd say the 30 days is just to potentially save some money. And then if it's not done in 30 days...
Within 30 days, I would believe he should be able to find an interested party to take it, you know, for whatever reason. Have something signed for you.
I'd like a signed purchase agreement.
If Habitat for Humanity will take it, I'll donate it. I've got a call into them now, but they haven't returned my call. And I will pursue that. So, I will give it to them if they'll take it. And I'm meeting some people at the place tomorrow morning. And maybe it's advanced guttering and they do that type stuff. And they would fix it up if they decide to. But if not, I will donate it to Habitat for Humanity. They can tear it down if they want the property. I thought the place was... Well, it is fixable, but I just cannot get the funds to do it right now. And it's... So, it's not for me. So, I will get rid of it if you guys will give me 30 days.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to suspend a 30 days when Andy's back, our city attorney. And we'll take another look at it. Second, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on to... I guess we're going back up to Chief Butler. Report?
Mark, before you do that, I did have one other communication item real quick. We did receive a thank you card from the chamber. Says, "Thank you very much for helping to support the Book of July fireworks. Your support has put a lot of smiles on children's faces that evening. Sincerely, Gloria Carr."
Did it have an invoice for $5,000, too?
It did, yes. We did get the invoice.
All right, Chief Butler, thank you, Sean.
You're welcome.
For the month of June, auto fire alarms, two in the city, one in Rochester Township. Future lane fires was a semi tanker. We had that ethanol tanker flip in Henry Township. We were over there helping them. Utility pool fires, one in Rochester Township. Open burning violations, one in Richland Township. Accidents, three in the city. Three in Rochester Township drove the In-N-Out South Bend hospital. And one in Richland Township. Gas tanks, one in the city, one in Rochester Township. Had an oil spill in the city. Medical assist, ten in the city, three Rochester Township. One Newcastle Township drove the In-N-Out hospital twice. Lift assist, one in Rochester Township. Service calls, three in the city and assistant DNR Nava Navi Township. Thirty-five runs and one drill. Depending on your questions, that concludes my report.
Go with your drill, chief. For June... I'm drawing a blank.
So, you have the fire deal up there, right?
Yeah, I think we were up.
The fire trailer?
Trailer. Trailer was destroyed. The trailer was still here. That's what it was.
Burn trailer?
Yeah, the Department of Homeland Security did the gas trailer.
Thank you, chief. Any questions for chief?
No, thanks for asking.
Tom, do you have a copy of that?
Okay, Chief Shot, you want to come up to this Channel 4 here? Put your TV face on.
Yeah.
Excuse me, sorry.
Sorry about that.
For the month of June... We had 15 total accidents, 41 total warnings issued, 33 total offenses, 53 case reports, 714 calls per service, 49 locked out, six towed vehicles, and 11 people incarcerated. And you see the number for the crimes individuals we relied for by my officers in the month of June. That's kind of odd, because if you notice, the total number of offenses were 33 there. And I think that's the lowest we've ever had. And we thought it was a blank. We thought it was an error. I don't know why. I can't explain it. But if you look at our case reports, they were right on par with the rest of the month. So, I cannot explain that.
No heroin?
What's that?
No heroin.
No, not last month.
I just heard a report on the news yesterday, today, from a DEA officer, saying that the heroin is at a level he's never seen. And he's got 32 years of experience, so he's becoming... Are they talking about Narcan at all at the academy with the new officers or anything with that? Because you guys are right there.
There... I read something...
They're giving you guys a nasal spray instead of the auto injection.
I think that's what they're talking about. I don't know what the academy's doing, but I've read an article where they are having a rash of overdoses. And they're starting to discuss that, whether or not they want that liability on the officer.
Out of the bigger cities, they're saying with the nasal, that it's... They're worried about the injection site. And if it's not that, that Narcan isn't going to affect anything else. It only eats up all their narcotics. Just curious.
Okay. Hopefully, we don't have to run into that, because that means we have a lot of overdose. But, yeah, the heroin, we're seeing it definitely. And the Clean Team, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with that, the Clean Team, that they were a part of. But that's their focus, is methamphetamine and heroin. They're trying to get in there before it gets here, before it gets to football. Other business, I've already told you guys about the testing, how that's going. We're doing... Currently doing background investigations and command staff interviews are scheduled for next Monday. So, we'll see how that goes.
Out of 18, you only have four left.
Five. Twenty-three turned applications back in, only 18 chose.
You got to put an application in, Burns.
Well, he was the one that quit.
We'll let the jazzy scooter go, right?
We didn't bring our calendars.
Lieutenant Campbell and I went to Bonnet Lake Hills last week to talk to them about getting Officer Handy signed up. We found out they do have a November class now. And based on statine issue, we felt it was best for the department if we signed him up for the November class rather than September class. So, he is enrolled in the November class. Initially, we thought September was going to be the last class. After we went down there, they said they added a class. We thought it'd be in the best interest of the department. Police in the Park is this Friday. The movie starts at 9:00 or shortly after. It's going to be on Men's Softball Field, Big Hero Six, Disney movie. Found a lot about written movies and claimed movies for the public. It's a one ordeal with licenses. All I noticed that. More than I cared about, actually. But the police start at 9:00 or shortly after that. They have to start at desk and have it on the men's softball field. Hopefully, we'll have a good turnout. We're going to be there at 7:00. The officers for the police department, we're going to be there at 7:00. At the main pavilion by the basketball court on the hill. Answering questions, taking concerns from people about anything in general. Us, what we're doing, why we do things, concerns going on in their neighborhoods. Things they probably don't know about. Trinity United Methodist Church, they're going to provide hot dogs. Grace United Methodist Church, they're going to bring popcorn. And then Mill Creek, Mill Creek Missionary Church, they're going to have water. I don't know if they're going to do pot or not, but I know they're going to do water. Some might charge, others might take donations. I'm not sure. We're going to have fingerprint kits to hand out to kids, other handouts. We've got bracelets and glow-in-the-dark necklaces and all that fun stuff. And then what I initially advertised is we're going to have a dog demonstration at 8:00. Our KNI officers are going to be on vacation, so...
Go prove man.
I know. You would have thought somebody in charge would have known that.
Go prove man.
So, and then Missy Eskridge got hold of me. She has a company called Photo Bombers, where she rents photo booths for parties and birthdays and wedding receptions. And she offered to bring that to the park, too, just to have a little fun, take photo booth pictures and things like that. And then Crime Shopper, they're going to have an area out there to answer any questions that the public might have from them. So, I hope for a good turnout. On Facebook, oh my God, I created an event and it says that there's about 200 people that are going to come. I'm hoping it is closer to three, but I'll be happy with 50. So, we'll see how it goes. And then National Night Out, that's August 4th. We're going to have extra patrols out, going through neighborhoods. And all we're asking the public to do is get out, go for a walk, talk to your neighbors, turn your lights on, light up the night, in an effort to show that...
Oh, it's leading. I thought you were offering babysitting services.
No, sorry. We do that enough on our campus. Yeah, it's a light up the night. Leave their porch lights on in an effort to show that neighbors and citizens are organized, are fighting back, and that criminals are outnumbered. We invite the public to stop our officers. If they see them, talk to them. I know our officers are going to be out walking neighborhoods and talking to people. So, just get out, be seen, and talk to the public. So, hopefully, everyone leave their porch lights on. It'll be a good turnout. And then our women's handgun class, September 27th. We haven't started advertising that yet. I don't have a sign up. But that's... We had a meeting last week. And we're going to have our second handgun class on the 27th and Fifth Street. If you ever call us. The women, I did have a little bit of issue last time. The first class, the women that didn't get in there, I didn't keep the list. So, and then the ones that didn't get in the first class didn't get notified about the second class. And I called heat because they didn't. So, I've got a list now. I think I've got a system down. So, those that didn't get in the last class will be given the first opportunity. And then we'll probably take about 20 or 25 of the ladies. It's about a good sized class for there's four or five of us that have out. So, good. That's all I have, my safety.
Thank you, chief. Any questions?
No, thank you, man.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to committee reports. Mark, the call. Eric Lang Commission.
Well... Either we didn't have a meeting or I just failed to attend it. I'm pretty sure we didn't have a meeting.
I like it.
Yeah, and that concludes my report. If any questions?
Good job. Brian Goodman, Fedco.
Fedco did meet July 2nd. Kind of a short meeting. They are looking at doing a community career fair late August, early September. Right now, Terry's been working with the State Department of Commerce and Agriculture regarding the Dean's property. There are already two prospects to go into that building. He also is talking to another prospect for Blackadder. And their initial report is 120 to 140 jobs. But they would be looking at upgrades to the wastewater out there. Team Pry is moving forward. Tops is moving forward. And he's waiting to hear from Friedman Seating about whether or not they're going to pursue an abatement from the county. Not really Fedco business, but we did learn Diane Spoor resigned as the chamber director at last meeting. Krogers is looking at hiring another 10 people. And the county reported that the wheel tax was approved and in place. So, starting next year, there'll be a wheel tax. And that is it.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions? Okay, Terry Lee's not here, but did he contact you? I told him to contact you. He had a couple things he wanted to bring up to the council or something?
Yes, he had... The only thing, he actually only told me one. Let me make sure I get it correct. Before I say it was... So, if there was something else, he didn't mention it. Terry, city council meeting tonight. Please... Oh, the redevelopment... Oh, that's what it was. The redevelopment commission has a meeting tomorrow evening with SDG at 4:00 PM at the federal office. And that is regarding our downtown revitalization plan. And it's an open public meeting. And he wanted to make sure that all councilmen understood that they are welcome to attend. And he would encourage you to attend and hear what SDG has proposed or is proposing moving forward. This is the ORA grant, is what this one was, that $40,000 planning grant that we've received from ORA. And we've got all the... I think two weeks ago, Mark and I got everything signed and sent down to the state to get the ball rolling on that. So, we're just waiting on the final approval and get our letter back from the state before we can actually engage in a contract with them. But we can certainly meet with them, so...
What time's the meeting?
Four. Four o'clock tomorrow evening at Fedco office. And I'm not sure if there was something else that he mentioned to you.
That's what he said.
Okay.
Didn't know if he was going to say any more than that.
That was it.
And then, too much. Okay, thanks, Sean. So, you're all invited to that tomorrow at 4:00. Rochester, Portisoni, and Council. Mark?
You skipping Burns?
Yeah.
How did I do that? I already marked you out, Burns.
Mark?
I'll go, or you want... You better go. That way I know how long I can do mine.
Quick board, Matt. Okay. There's the swimming board. They had July 1st to July 11th, they had 1,399 swimmers. And June, 4,325. Now, this is compared to just a little over 1,275 the year before. The income was somewhere around $13,482 in 2015. 14, nothing. And 13 was $11,000. So, it shows you that there's something going on. Although they've had not too many hot days up till this past week and a half, they had a problem with chairs. They didn't have enough chairs for everyone that were at the pool. So, they ordered 16 more chairs and two more umbrellas. Also, the cameras are not enough to cover the entrance of the pool. And they've been having a little problem there breaking in at the pool a couple times. And they finally did catch the young fellows that were doing that. They were young kids breaking in. Also, they have to hour swim or donation, and to be determined by Lori. She's going to deal with that. And they need an assistant manager for the pool. And they're looking for that. She would like to get someone that is not a young person, that maybe has a little bit... If she is gone, can take charge of things. This is one of the problems that she's dealt with. The young people who she puts in charge is not when she has to lean there for a while, a couple, two, three hours. They have a tough time making decisions. She gets phone calls about these decisions. The golf report. Rainfall and it's been a problem out at the golf course, as you know. The fees are down. Total revenues, 134,575 compared to 143,000 last year at this time. They need some reseating in some of the fairways. Have been done here in August because of the water damage. Gary Champ and Earl Grail replaced the motor on the down green square, saving a little over 1,300. little over 1,300 by replacing the motor. The goose eradication crew, they've been getting, getting some of the geese off the golf course. Our, that's all I'll say about that. The cart fleet is in its fifth year, and the seats have to be replaced at about $25 a seat. Normally, it's about $175 a seat to replace those seats. But Yamaha's gonna give them a break on it. If they can get the seats and get the guys working there to replace those seats, then they can stand those carts for another couple of years. That's gonna help revenue a little bit. Several plant projects, trees along the Four Seasons Court, Tred Court out there, trees along there need to be trimmed and replaced. And that's about the golf report. The overflow parking is a little problem at the dam landing. Otherwise, people going into the dam landing or parking out there where the people sit in the lake, there's a pier out there, and they're taking up that room. You can't get in there a lot of times. And that's the overflow parking. They're not gonna cross the street and parking in their own parking lot.
It's usually full too.
I was gonna say, a lot of times it's full too.
Yeah.
It was all weekend.
And that my street too.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's, that's a little problem.
It's a good problem for the dam to have. Wish more businesses in town.
Question, is there street parking along, at all, on Lake Shore Drive? I know not on Uweing, because Uweing's too narrow, but is there on Lake Shore Drive that you can do street parking?
Parallel.
I think there's a sign that says no parking.
That's why I'm asking. I didn't know that, I mean, we're on RTC, that if we could communicate to the public in some way, if there is alternative parking available as well. I don't know, I don't live over there, I haven't looked at the street ordinance to see.
It really didn't say no parking along West Side Drive either.
There's no...
Well, it's all new, it might take care of itself.
Could they put a sign up, park instead of, yeah, parking there just for the...
Public, public place to park.
Yeah, just gotta patrol it.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be a lot to ask them to try to differentiate between...
Call Ryan's back, and he'd come down.
So, citizen patrol?
I'll check it out.
Andy will get you a pazer.
Wait a minute.
It's a large furnace.
Okay, that's my bad.
I can hypnotize you. Point she is a placement.
Let me be out of town. I wanna take the chance. Get many fast transgressions in my life.
All right, be that way.
Andy would check on that with the attorney, I guess, maybe he would...
There's nothing, there's no parking on Lake Shore.
There's, there's no parking restrictions on Lake Shore.
So, if they wanna park down past the dam alongside the road, just kinda pull off. Which was, I think, I think you know.
Well, and at city property, if you're going, it, it, where, the curve's right there, all along Mill Curve, yeah, just Mill Creek.
On the west side?
On that west side.
Or if you're going west on the north side?
Yeah, exactly. They, you know, you've got that grass.
It's city property.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying, it's city property, so if you have to pull somewhere, I mean, I need to go over rice, but...
I would, yeah, I would tend to lean towards parking on that side as opposed to lining in front of people's houses, then people might start complaining.
Okay. Now, Marty.
Yes, BZA meeting is tomorrow, and that's been canceled for lack of activity. But the Council on Aging met yesterday. A few things of note. Just when things were looking up with the vehicles, the two new ones came in last month, the O6 that was purchased earlier, they, they had a little issue with, they took it in for a simple repair and found out that the frame had completely rusted out. They could stick their fingers through the thing, so it got condemned immediately. It didn't even, they didn't even started to drive it out of the repair shop, they pulled it out. The commissioners have yet to name a replacement for Dave Tovson. They were going to...
That's taken care of.
It is now named. Okay, well, that hasn't been communicated as of yesterday, so, good, okay. We, just for some general information, the Community Foundation has since 1998 supported eight projects over at the Council on Aging Center for a total of $48,165, which, that's kind of a nice little addition they've done. They were, the people at, at the building were just very thankful for the landscaping work. Somebody from the city lined up, either you or Warren, or they, Steve the landscaper did it, and they, they really did a nice job. So, it looks very nice. If you haven't driven by the facility lately, stop and look at it. August 17th, if you have a chance, the Dairy Queen is doing a fundraiser from four to closing, so a bit of the proceeds goes back to Council on Aging. I raised several hundred dollars for them last time, and they will be doing a spaghetti dinner in September. That date hasn't been set yet. For the month of June, they did 3,290 rides. That's down a little bit again from June of 2014, and most of that, it's a long explanation, but the short of it is that Medicaid is, changes the rules on them all the time, and Medicaid is now not paying them for rides if the rider is insured with Anthem and another one, they have their own separate accounts, and Medicaid does not pay for those rides. So, people are not taking them. That's the report, if there are any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions?
Are they supposed to turn in, like, those rides are a dollar, so they're supposed to turn that into their own insurance or something?
No, it, it's for the, it's for the long trips where they're going, sometimes out of town. So, a trip could be as much as $60 or $70.
Okay.
That the person can't pay themselves, and if they're in with Anthem, they, they just can't use both county transport. So, it's not the dollar rides.
It's the transporting to hospitals or wherever for treatment or whatever.
Yes.
Okay, thanks again. Chase, do you have anything to report on solid waste and animal adoption?
On solid waste, I, it brings numbers with me, so I apologize for that. I don't know if I communicated this or not, but Doug, the director, the past director for the solid waste, he had finally retired as of May 31st, I believe, and Stacy Hart was appointed the director. I don't know if anybody knew that or not. And she's been doing a really good job, and I think with her position and everything, with everything going on. And also, another major point I guess was that the board approved to pay, to reimburse the city, was it $1,700, Mark?
Yes, per month.
Per month.
Till the end of the year.
Till the end of the year to pick up recycling for the city, city only. And that's all I have for solid waste. And then the animal center, we had an event at Shawle Tier that raised roughly $765. Seems to be pretty good. You could bring your dogs in, and I think they gave bats and microchips and stuff like that there. Also, we ended up approving the purchase of a new vehicle from Shepherd's. Our old vehicle just kinda broke down and almost too cost prohibitive to fix, so we're gonna end up selling that. Hope maybe if somebody can purchase it now. So, hopefully here soon, we'll be able to get the new vehicle up and running at the center and use it for...
Brand new, or new?
Yeah. 2015, I believe. Other than that, really not much that I noticed.
Chase, for what it's worth, I think that Stacy presented to the Kiwanis Club last noon, Wednesday at noon, and she did a great job. It was a very interesting program on the recycling.
Yeah, she seems to be doing what I hear.
Okay, thanks, Chase. Any other questions? Okay, Tom Butler, Tree Board EMA.
Tree Board Met, again, we're talking about the matter across tree. Mr. Cray came and asked permission to pay, have his tree cut down. That was taken care of and resolved, so he watered it down, he paid for it out of his own pocket, so Pro Tree Service wasn't used on that. And then they're still working and gathering information for the grant, trying to get that cost down, because the grant cost was about as much as we were asking for the grant as to complete the downtown tree replacement project. So, as you come to town, again, we wanted a different flowering tree, it's a smaller tree, so they weren't overbearing in long-term maintenance and that. So, they're still working on that project. Ray is with the surveying office, trying to get the documentation that the grant writer requested. EMS met June 5th. They're working on getting their ambulance replaced that was totaled out in the accident on State Route 14 coming back from Fort Wayne, when they hit the wire after the pole was flipped ahead of them. I think I reported that last month, where they clipped the wire and drug the pole into the cab of the truck, totaled it out. So, working on that. They also have a handheld radio issue. They're working with Gail from 911. They're gonna go the same way that the PD and the fire department went with the dual band radios, because they're having issues where if they don't get the VHF to use the 800, if they don't have those capabilities, instead of carrying two radios, they're gonna follow suit with what the city, I think the sheriff department as well, has gone to those as, as well. So, they're looking into, to get that taken care of, getting some quotes from who to roll in, the other J and K communication. They advise that they had a reimbursement from Medicaid from 2014 in the sum of $75,058.22. And then their total revenue for the month of June was $74,535.94, and they had a total of 161 runs, 80 of those from Rochester, 19 Kiwana, 50 from Akron. And then with the EMA, they did replace Dave Tovson with Larry Hoover, who's coming over from Plasque County. He was the EMA director over there, has a lot of background and experience with the grant, just through the Department of Homeland Security, that they have a lot of grants, and what they need is a county to facilitate and manage that, and Larry's done a good job over there. I think that's one of the things that the county looked at when his application came across, some of it, can manage those, go after grants, benefit the district as well as our, our county itself with different assets. You know, we've got the, a couple things, we got the light trailer, we've got some other assets, we've got hardened shelters or mobile shelters that we would use in eventual rates that are stationed here. We have the portable phone unit, that's a district asset that we house here in the county. So, hopefully we get some more assets. They said that'll be staged here in the event of an emergency, so that's my three reports, pending any questions.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions? Okay, I think we're done with committee reports of water, right?
Here's Water Board Matt. Pardon me?
John Garrett.
Thank you. Water Board Met, and I got approved the minutes on the June 1st meeting, and they met the link that list for July was reviewed and approved. Randy updated the board, the peerless testing last month showed that well one motor needed either overhaul or replaced. Mr. Hill was checking to which would be more cost effective. He also presented the board with three quotes for steel coating and plant parking lot and drive, range of materials. One, the quotes with $983 to do that work. Mark motioned to hire Ranger to seal the drive, and of course, they are the ones that they're gonna hire. Randy also told the board they needed to revise the December 1st, 2014 to include an increase in pay for the board from $2,300 to $2,500. They approved that also. He informed the board that Derek would have the phone from July 13th to 24th, as he will be on vacation. Marvin asked then about a problem that I'd not heard about before, but Marvin asked about the follow-up on the last month's question, is about deceased names being on active account. Randy said, the city attorney, attorney Perkins, said that the water, the water office should send a letter to tell them they need to get the name changed within so many days or the water be shut off. Marvin then asked him, what if the deceased spouse's name or other spouse was still living there? So, of course, Andy is gonna check on that and see what kind of problems they will run into them. I still think they'll have to have the name, the names changed. Speaking of other business, Doug motioned to jury.
Thanks, John.
Any questions? Thanks, Seth.
Okay, moving on down to Citizens Committee. Marty, do you have anything on that for update to the council?
Well, just a little update, I apologize to council members if you spent the time reading that rather lengthy resolution that was in your packet. If you, if you've kept up a little bit, there was an article in the Sentinel. Basically, Val Pemberton initiated a Citizens Action Committee, which is primarily organized to try to reduce the meth lab problem in Fulton County. And with that, Harry Webb has gotten involved and a few other of us folks that are on the committee. And initially, they asked me to bring to the council a resolution, which Andy reviewed, and that's what was in your packet, but we took that off of the table because the committee is, is really going to ask the council to pass an ordinance as opposed to the resolution, so that there's a little more teeth in, in what we're doing. Already, we've seen about a 50% drop in the sale of Sudafed or pseudoephedrine products in the county. Walmart and Walgreens and Kroger have agreed to take the product behind the counter and legitimize all purchases, which it estimated about 100 or so of the products sold are really legitimate prescription and/or necessary. Sales of Sudafed, which the county has averaged about 694 units of sale a month in this. I'm, I'm learning a lot about, I don't, I didn't know terms like smurfing and, but a guy that goes in and buys the Sudafed for $6.95 and then goes out and sells it to the meth maker is smurfing. How, why, or I don't know, but anyway, Harry and I believe Mark Williamson were both down, they were asked to testify at a senate hearing on a substance abuse committee that Randy had... had heads up. And he has since put this out on, on his Facebook page. Logan's Board has run a newspaper article about what Fulton County is doing. And of course, the Sentinel ran one. So, we are seeing some initial benefits of the work that's being done. So, basically, the committee is going to come to the city council and ask about an ordinance that has a little bit of teeth, requiring the pharmacies to legitimize the sale of the pseudoephedrine product, which there are, I, I don't want to act like I know very much, because I don't want to know that I'm a one-pot. I don't know what that means either, but a one-pot meth lab is what's going around here. And Sudafed is one of the things they need to do, the one-pot method. So, if we can legitimize the sale and, and get that down from six hundred and ninety-four boxes to a hundred legitimate sales, that's what the committee's after, so.
That sounds like what they're trying to do is, because state legislation won't...
Won't make it.
Won't make a controlled substance. They won't make the pseudoephedrine-based cold pills, that controlled substance where you have to go to a doctor and get a prescription for. They're kind of taking an alternate route locally to try to curb the, the meth use and, and meth-making. Because that's what you need, through a chemical process, that's what you're doing, is you're changing the active ingredient, the cold pill, and the methamphetamine. So, there's a hundred different ways to make it, but every, every, every way you make it, you have to have pseudoephedrine, because that's what you're changing into methamphetamine through a chemical process.
And really not trying to reinvent anything, this is based, our work's based off a twenty-eleven Arkansas law that the pharmacist must make a professional determination that a patient's medical need to, to buy the drug. And they, they saw a forty-three percent drop in their meth labs in just, in twenty-fourteen. Mississippi had done the same thing in, in twenty-ten, and they went from nine hundred and fourteen labs in twenty-ten to two in twenty-fourteen. So, it can make a difference. I don't know if that makes the heroin problem you face worse or, or not, but.
It, it's probably going to increase the heroin use. If they can't get one, they'll get the other. The only convenient, I won't say nice, but the convenient thing about methamphetamine is your, your, your drug dealer doesn't have to have it, you can make it yourself. If your drug of choice is heroin and you go to your drug dealer and he's out of it, you can't make your own. That's not the case with methamphetamine. You can make your own if, if the guy you're getting...
So, Andy is actually researching whether we do, whether we even have the authority to pass an ordinance that applies to the sale of product in an individual business. Like I said, three out of the four are already committed to doing, Harry's been doing it for years. But with Walmart and Walgreens jumping on board, we're, you know, it doesn't anticipate much, much of a conflict here in Fulton County. But Andy is going to research whether we even have that authority to pass an ordinance. So, we'll come back next month with either the resolution back in front of us or an ordinance to talk about. Thank you for taking a little bit of time with that.
Thank you, Mark. Will we, any other questions? We will have the legal department since Andy's on vacation. ADA concerns, are any ADA concerns? We have no resolutions or ordinances. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, Mark, motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Did you guys get the transportation plan in your baguettes? No, I've got the, yeah, I've got that in my office. Thank you for reminding me. I did, I walked out and forgot them.
Want to talk about it or anything?
Um, real briefly, while she talks.
All right, yeah, fine, so I can touch you guys.
Sorry.
Didn't get your chair. I don't know.
Oh, wait, I have to wait. It's not a whole way.
We all ready.
It's mutual.
So, it's your table there.
I'm already adjourned.
You didn't vote. You didn't vote. The plant commissioner back in two thousand and five had the US Thirty-One Transportation Committee that they got together. And they created a report, and the state did everything with US Thirty-One, so it sat on a shelf. In two thousand and twelve, the US Thirty-One Coalition came back and said, please get the report out, dust it up, have the committee reconvene and look at it, put a fresh set of eyes on it. The committee did exactly that. We have, all of our meetings were open, but we did have a number of the members of the public that did come. Tom sat on the committee, John Garrett, Mark McCall, Mark Smiley. Mark, I think you were, and a few of them came in and visited. So, we had quite a bit of interest from both the city as well as the county, and that's how the committee was made up. It was actually made up of expertise, not necessarily names. So, every time the committee was reconvene throughout the years, we had the same emergency personnel that were on there, but a different person sitting in that seat, which was kind of nice, because we had different ideas and thoughts. What you have in front of you is the final draft. What the commissioners would like to see is the council's thoughts, your blessing on it, before they give it to the US Thirty-One Coalition, because the US, even though Thirty-One is not necessarily in the city limits, it definitely has a very large impact on the city of Rochester's commerce, as well as tourism and, and all the facets involved. So, they'd like for you to go ahead and take a look at it. I'll be happy to answer any of your questions. Once, those of you who haven't seen it, look at it, feel free to call me, and I can hopefully answer your questions. But then, at the next meeting, if you guys could talk, if there aren't any major changes, you don't see any red flags, we're just, I guess, a motion to recommend. Because either way, this will still go to indax, and it's ultimately their decision. But the idea is to give them a report, and when they do start making decisions about Fulton County, we've already filled out the seat and let them know what we believe we need. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, I entertain that.
Motion. Make a motion. I'll be out, I'll be out.
Don't go away. Don't go away.